And welcome to the committee of the whole meeting at Suyes Town Council, Monday, April the 4th, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. in council chambers. So we'll call the meeting to order and ask if there's any introduction of late items. No, there isn't. So could I please have the agenda adopted as, okay, that would be King Campbell. All in favor? Thank you. And first on our agenda is a delegation. This is from the Agricultural Land Commission and a presentation. And I'd just like to introduce the people, according to my list, that are here, some of them who I know and some we've just met. So we have Jerry Zimmerman, who I know because Jerry was on the library board with me for three years, and on the last meeting, telling this out of school, Jerry, he announced that he had just got a new library card. He'd never had one before. So we all clapped. And I asked him if he'd used it, and I won't tell you what he said. And Greg Norton, who I've known since the day one, I think, haven't I? Day two? Okay. Jim Johnson.
Thank you.
Ron Wallace. Thank you. Martin Collins. Thank you. Kim Groot. And Ann Skinner. So welcome to all of you, and I believe that you have, we have, have a general discussion on the Agricultural Land Commission. And we're just happy that you're here. And can I turn it over to, to, okay, to Kim? Thank you.
Pardon me? Great. So I believe I was going to be operating it from just over here. So good morning. I thought it would just maybe be helpful to start off, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to wear this like Madonna, but I'll just hold it like it's a microphone. I'll be more comfortable that way, probably. And so we have been meeting with local governments. We're really happy that you accepted our invitation, so thank you very much. So we have a bit of an overview presentation that we thought we'd go through, just focusing a little bit on maybe some of the things that have changed since the last time the Agricultural Land Commission has been to the town of Suyes. And then that will be followed, I understand there's some presentations you'd like to make to us, and Martin Collins, our regional planner for this area, also be touching on a few points related more specifically to planning. So if that's acceptable to you, you're welcome. All right. So as all of you are aware, the Agricultural Land Commission is an independent administrative tribunal. Our purpose is to carry out the mandate as it's stated in the Agricultural Land Commission Act, as well as interpret and apply any legislative regulation that's adopted by the provincial government that affects us. The purpose, I'm sure everyone's very familiar with purpose number one, which is to preserve agriculture, but our purpose, as stated in the act, goes a little bit deeper than that in terms of working to encourage farming and collaborating with local governments, First Nations, on ensuring that our policies are consistent and all work together to encourage that farming activity. When we talk about the ALR, it is a finite resource, as you can imagine. It only takes up 5% of the province, and when you actually drill down into that a little more closely, you start to see that of that 5%, really only 1.1% of it is considered prime agricultural land. And if you look at it a little bit more closely, of that 5% of the province, for example, only 5% of that ALR is in the Okanagan. So that starts to give you a sense of how precious that resource is, and this is just a breakdown for your information of how that moves across the six regional panels. So Bill 24, this was some changes that came into effect in terms of our act specifically that actually split the ALR into two zones, so we now have zone one and zone two. It also mandated the return to six regional panels. And it redefined the role of the chair, and we'll talk about that a little bit more specifically. And it introduced Section 4.3, which was a new section into the act that talks about considerations specifically as it relates to zone two, which we'll touch on those. Zone one, of course, includes the Okanagan, which is yourself, the south coast and the island. Zone two is the Kootenays, the interior, and the northern panel. So Section 4.3, this is the one that came into effect along with the introduction of zone two, actually states that these are, this is the mandate in zone two, but you'll note that it's in descending order of priority. So it continues to include Section 6, which I talked about at the beginning in terms of the purpose of the act, which is to preserve agriculture. That's still priority number one. And more specifically outlined the considerations as it relates to B, C, and D in terms of economic, cultural, social, and planning objectives. I think at the Agricultural Land Commission, we feel that this continues to be consistent across the province. These following considerations, as probably you're familiar in planning exercises, working with local governments on OCPs, some of those considerations have always been given across the province, but they're very specifically now indicated in the act with respect to zone two. With respect to the governance model, so we do have what we consider the full commission. That's made up of 19 members, 18 coming from the panels, and our chair, Mr. Leonard. This is broken into the six regional panels. The chair of the panel, and in this case, this is Jerry Zimmerman, who was introduced to you at the beginning, he's the chair of the Okanagan panel, which also makes him a vice chair of the commission. And he sits on the executive committee along with the chair and the other six vice chairs. So each chair of a regional panel is also a vice chair of the overall commission, and they sit as the executive, which we'll touch a little bit on in terms of what they do. And then we have our new chair, Frank Leonard. So the executive committee, which I stated consists of the chair and vice chairs, they're responsible for deciding on some applications the chair might consider are so provincially significant that they exceed the context of just the panel. They also decide on applications that the panel determines might be better determined by the executive, perhaps because of the significance of the decision. There are reconsideration applications, this is something that follows from the duties and roles of the chair, which I'll talk about. And then anything the commission might have delegated to the executive, for example, our responsibility for annual report preparation and some specific operational duties, the full commission has delegated to the executive that meets with greater frequency. So the full commission, right now, the full commission meets twice a year, and they are the ones responsible for adopting our bylaws, our more specific operational policies. They actually determine ALR boundaries through ALR boundary review processes, those aren't done by the regional panel. And they're the ones that vote and consider on official community plans, for example, that come forward for the communities. Those are presented ultimately to the commission for determination of consistency and adoption. With respect to the role of the chair, the chair is actually tasked with referring all applications either to a panel or the executive. There is a current internal working directive where all applications are referred to the panel. The current chair is not vetting them and directing any of them to the executive at this time. So every application we receive is considered by the regional panel that is affected by it. And then all of the decisions that are made by the panel are actually reviewed by the chair for consistency with respect to Section 6 and Section 4.3. And this was a new consideration that came into place when the commission was taken back to the six regional panels in an effort to ensure there's consistency with decision-making across the province. So the chair has 60 days to review the decision of the panel and determine whether or not he feels it's consistent. If the chair determines that there is perhaps inconsistent, that application and that decision is referred to the executive, who then reconsider's it. And then the decision of the executive is the actual decision that stands at the end of the day. And I think we just touched on this with respect to the role of the chair and the reconsideration powers that position holds. And then with respect to the regulations, so what we just chatted about were some changes related to the act. You're probably very familiar with some of the changes that happened in 2015 around the reg itself. Medicinal marijuana, of course, is now permitted farm activity. We don't consider it any differently than any, the production of any other farm product. Farm, retail, and processing, in particular in the fruit and berry section, is permitted through a cooperative, which relaxes the requirement for 50% on farm. Breweries, distilleries, and meteries are permitted, provided 50% of the input is produced by the operator. And you're now able to lease a portion of the farm for farm purposes. I know Martin and ourselves will be doing a little bit of work after this overview presentation, but we really do consider local governments, and when we say local governments, we mean regional and municipal as our partners. You're the first doorstep through the application process. We look very closely and consider what your community plans say. I know there's regulation that requires your land use bylaws to be endorsed and accepted by the Agricultural Land Commission prior to first reading, but we're certainly here to work with you as early on in the process as possible, if you wish to do so. And then, of course, compliance, we consider that something that we do in concert with local governments. And over 75% of the agricultural land reserve is within the jurisdiction of a regional or municipal government. We've been in the news a fair bit lately, if you've been following that, and we are fortunate enough to receive a funding increase over our base budget for the upcoming year. Basically represents a 33% increase in funding, so that's quite substantial. And as noted by the Ministry of Provincial Government, they're really interested in ensuring they continue to support the regional panel decision-making process, so this funding will allow us to get out and conduct meetings like the ones we're having here with you today, as well as work with local governments on your OCP planning processes as early on in the process. We have some staff that will be going up to other municipal jurisdictions to even give a presentation to their local OCP steering committee, so that the committee is hearing the message of the Agricultural Land Commission, not just coming through planning staff. And we see us working more diligently in compliance and enforcement. We've been fortunate with this budget lift to already have retained two additional bylaw enforcement officers, so we're now up to four. For those who probably remember, we, one or two officers were fortunate, and we're hoping to get up to six officers. So we have essentially one per region, although they'll be working across purposes with each other. And some new fees have been introduced for applications. This literally just happened two weeks ago. Oh, last week? Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. So last week, with respect to, the few changes came into effect April 1st, but they were announced two weeks ago with respect to the effective date. So these went into effect on Friday. The provincial government has introduced new fees, so it's gone from, to 1,500 and 900 from essentially 600. And you can see the fees have been structured based on the zone. And there are some new fees that have been introduced, because quite often there are decisions that can span 10 years in terms of compliance and monitoring and ensuring enforcement. And so those types of decisions, there's been an introduction of a fee structure that we're still working to implement to allow us to recover some of those costs. And along with the introduction of that budget increase and some fee adjustments to help recover some of that, there's an expectation of performance. And so the minister issued a performance target order to the Agricultural Land Commission that's looking to us to make our decisions within 60 business days. That, of course, doesn't take into account statutory holidays or weekends, and there's also some triggers of a site visit is required or some additional information. That clock, for all intents and purposes, stops while we gather that information, but we will be working to achieve that. And if we're unable to reach a decision within 90 business days, respecting those clocks that can be turned on and off, there is a full refund of the ALC portion of that fee is an expectation. We have some obligations around compliance and enforcement. We'll be working to update our website, better articulate what's going on, increase our compliance and enforcement staff, which we're in the process of doing. And that, we're extremely interested in engaging more effectively with local governments, and we're going to introduce an annual survey every year to see what we could be doing with each other more effectively on a more regular basis. And we're also going to try an annual client survey. We know people won't necessarily be happy with the decisions that we make all the time, but was the process clear? Was it understandable? Was it efficient? Was it effective? And so that is what we will be working on in the upcoming year, for sure. And so, thank you. Frank Leonard, as mentioned, is our chair. I am the CEO, and we can be reached at those numbers there. So with respect to process, perhaps I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
And thank you very much. I think that that was, that made it quite clear about the changes that were being made and sort of an overview, because it's been kind of nebulous, and we hear about the Agricultural Land Commission, but we're never quite sure who we should contact or what we should do, although I understand Mr. Cunningham probably knows a lot better than the rest of us how to deal with that. So, thank you for that. Are there any questions from council on this section of it? No? Yes? Councilor Youngberg.
Just a query, of course. Fees for zone one, 1,500, 900 for zone two, how has that arrived at?
So the Agricultural Land Commission, we weren't involved in the establishment of that fee structure, but when it was announced, the rationale behind the changes in the fees was the variation in farm revenue between the two zones.
Okay.
Was how that was presented to us coming out of cabinet.
Based on revenue? Right. Interesting.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So, Mr. Cunningham, are you going to give them some idea about why we're happy that they're here? To talk about some certain things?
So I believe Malcolm gave you some introduction to what I'm going to talk about.
Alan, you're going to need a microphone. You're going to need a microphone.
Do you want this one?
Okay.
Can you just speak?
Do you want to clip it?
That's okay.
Okay. So, since we knew you were coming, we wanted to take the opportunity.
You have to talk into the microphone.
He's never been in a band, you can tell.
Want to take the opportunity of presenting our new proposed subdivision in the southeast Medlarke area. And it's just next to our new fire hall, which is under construction, which will be complete in October. Both these parcels are part of our southeast Medlarke area. The fire station will be completed, as I say, at October, and this property itself has already been excluded by the ALR. Back in 2010, with cooperation of the Agricultural Land Commission, we prepared a secondary area plan under our OCP for this 40-acre area. We saw the need for that because the area had already transitioned very largely agricultural use. There was a lot of scattered development in it, and instead of just letting things proceed as they were, we thought it would be opportune to plan it on a neighborhood basis. So at 2010, we prepared the plan. At the same time, there was a parallel process going with an affordable housing strategy, because we wanted to make sure that this area was very well represented in terms of meeting affordable housing needs. On the strength of the secondary OCP, the Agricultural Land Commission, first of all, they approved the plan, supported the plan, and they also passed a policy in principle to support exclusions from the agricultural land reserve as they came up, as long as they met certain conditions of the area plan. And the key conditions that the Agricultural Land Commission said they would be looking for was first, that we develop a medium residential development, no ranchers, has to be developed at a higher density so that we make best use of the lands. The second thing was that the residential development itself should include an affordable housing component. And the third item, very important, was that the lands around the outside, which would be our OCP boundary area, would have to be protected with a buffer with, for the, vis a vis the agricultural uses that would remain on the outer side of the boundary. So we already have interface development permit guidelines for that, they would be applied to that. When we're talking about the Richter property, that particular condition does not apply. So returning to the Richter property, went through quite a long design process. It was quite a difficult site to develop because of topographical constraints. It drops off quite steeply here, and we ended up with a smaller site compared to what we thought we had originally. Actually, I'll put this north-south. The fire hall is up here, so here we have a 3.763-acre area, and we've managed to plan 28 units in this area. 24 of the units are these narrow frontage, single-family homes here, and then we have two duplex units, so there's a total of 28 units. The single-family narrow frontages, those are nine-meter, approximately nine-meter units. That was the target. We had to go above that in some areas, just because of some of the land constraints and just because of the design considerations. Within, well, I should say that all of these units will be lower-priced in respect to the market. We're talking about probably a top price of $350,000, and that's inexpensive round here to get your own new home. On top of that, there's four of the units will be near-market affordable units, so there'll be a discount of 15% to 20% off the market price. And those will be made available to targeted families, younger families, we hope, and they'll be delivered to those people through an affordable housing authority, which we're just, we're just setting up. In terms of servicing, we are going to act as our own subdivision developer, and so we're going to connect to all the services that are already going in for the fire hall, so there's water and sewer and road here. So the road will be connected down to Ren Place. The sewer, which is needed for the fire hall, will go down through this whole area and will come out at this point here, and it'll be, come down here by gravity, and then there'll be a forced main that will go across the road. And this location here for the sewer will be exactly right for servicing this whole area with just one pump station. The water itself will also come from the fire hall, and one thing which I'd like to mention to you is that the whole area is going to be subject to our new special design guidelines. It's farm-based zoning. It's the only example of this in the Okanagan. It's fairly common in the States, some applications in the lower mainland, and it will ensure that, in fact, all of the houses are designed according to property design standards, because as you can appreciate, when you've got a lot of houses like this, which are located relatively close to each other, you could end up with a jumbled mess. So all of it will be very, very carefully designed. We have a developer who stepped up to the place, has broken out, and he's just signed an agreement to buy lots in the property, and he's just, he really wants to get going on this. And he's a very, very good developer, so we're looking forward to working with him very closely. He's also working with the architectural designer that we involved in the first place in preparing our design guidelines, so we're very, very confident that everything is going to look very good indeed. So we think this is a really good start to the development of the southeast Medlarke lands. The original intent was to take the rezonings and the OCP changes to a third reading, and then ask for confirmation from the Agricultural Land Commission that we were on target in terms of meeting the objectives of the southeast Medlarke plan. And then when everything, hopefully, is all approved by council, then we'll be asking the Agricultural Land Commission to register the exclusion on land title. So do you have any questions?
Yes, please. Mr. Zimmerman.
Just for us, our.
For us that aren't that familiar with the Suyes, whereabouts is this exactly?
So, I could have explained that to you. So, no, nothing is going to be. So this is the road, the main highway that goes down to the border.
Right.
Okay. So the intersection, the main intersections you come into town will be up here. So it's on the far side of town there.
Can you show us with your finger just off of the map where we're sitting right now?
Where we are now.
Well, you just played about six inches off the corner of the map.
Okay. We're over here.
Sort of right about there.
Over here. Approximately.
You know where the arena is, Perry?
Yeah.
Yeah. The marina's over there.
Oh, okay. I've got a hand for it. And then a couple other questions. The houses, could you explain a little bit more, the units that you're talking about? They're the affordable units. Are they, they're single-story? Maybe you mentioned that.
They're double-story. That would be approximately. Sorry. He's always having to tell me. Approximately 1,200 square feet. It could go up to 1,400, and there won't be any observable difference from the outside between the near-market of affordable units and the full-market ones. They'll be identical from the outside.
Okay. And my last question is, does the Suyes have a secondary suite policy? Like in some cities, what they, they have a policy that secondary suites are allowed in pretty much any house, anywhere in a city. And I understand that affordable housing is an issue. Is that something you've ever considered?
Yeah. We have a very open policy towards secondary suites. And I should add that in terms of the longer-term development of this whole area, we did some design tests to see what kind of densities and units potentially we could get into this area. So this shows about just over 50% of the area being developed over the long term. We feel that we could accommodate all of our medium-density growth needs for the next 15, 20 years alone in this particular area. So this shows about 270 units that build out, but I say, we're talking 15 to 20 years. And as we get further down the line, there'll be opportunities for higher-density developments. There'll be low-rise apartments here, and we've also identified the possibility for duplexes and triplexes and rural housing, and also lean houses as well. We find that, I think that later down, there'll be a market for that.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a question, you were talking about affordability aspects, and you were indicating, I believe that you were establishing an affordability task force. I was just interested in the four units that you were working to preserve as near-market for purposes of affordability, how they were protected in the long run for that. I believe you, as a municipality, own this piece of property that you're developing? I was just curious if there's mechanisms to sort of preserve that aspect of affordability?
Yeah, certainly is. So the, first of all, I'll tell you how the units are going to be acquired from the developer. It's going to be acquired through what's called inclusionary zoning, so the developer's getting a benefit from developing those lands, which hitherto wouldn't be open for development. So in exchange for that, we're requiring them to set aside 15% of their units at our choice for affordable housing. And the units will be selected, their locations will be selected in collaboration between the developer and the town, and that will be confirmed in a housing agreement under Local Government Act. And that's, according to legal advice, that's even stronger than a contract. Any more questions?
Thank you. Just one of the questions in our applications, that we have our revised applications, is this good application, good for agriculture? I'd like to hear some comments from yourself and council on how this would benefit agriculture, this development, as well. And then, I guess, in the context of Section 6, right, whatever you started, you're on. And the other thing I would ask is, is there any non-agricultural lands in the community that could accommodate something like this?
Okay. So we actually have very little non-agricultural lands left in the town. As past councils have said, funded and saying we're running out of dirt. But in terms of managing growth and protecting agricultural lands, I think the town here has been one of the forerunners in that. We were the first municipality in South Okanagan to put in an urban growth boundary and with the associated policies. The other municipalities are catching up to that now because they're required to do it under the RGS, Regional Growth Strategy, but we had it in a long time before that as part of our OCP. And we're trying to concentrate growth as much as possible. I mean, that's part of the principle behind here. Instead of just letting growth go out and out and out, we're trying to focus it in select areas like this, which will require, to become, you know, become active, will require an enlargement of our urban growth boundary. Like presently, the urban growth boundary goes around our fire hall, and that's it. Any further development here not only requires the approval of the Agricultural Land Commission, but also requires council to extend its urban growth boundary.
Did that answer that? Yeah. Okay. Is there anyone else that has a question? Anybody from council? That, Councilor Rhodes, did you have something? Yeah, go ahead.
I do have a question, but it's not about.
I do have a question, but it's not about this, so if you want to finish this off, I should have jumped in earlier, I apologize.
That's okay, go ahead then.
Thank you very much for coming today. This is my third term on council. I learned more about the commission in your presentation than I have combined in the past. So thank you very much for that. You guys do outstanding work in our province. I totally respect everything you're doing and very supportive of everything you do. And I also really, really like your resolve and how you deal with different applications and the outcome of those applications. So if you guys are protecting agricultural land in this province, good job. In the town of Asuias, in our municipality, we're not totally unique, but we have some unique circumstances here. Alen kind of touched on it a little bit. If you look towards the east, we have mountains. If you look towards the west, we have mountains. We have an international border to our south. And we have privately-owned agricultural land to the north of us. So we have a very definitive and well-defined space in our community to run our community and develop it as opportunities come along. We had made several applications over the year, of which I'm a veteran of each one of those, with some property that is agricultural. This is not about any of the decisions that were made, but I just, I wanted to ask a question about the process and how you make those decisions. It's always been a mystery to me and how the, you know, the application is made. I get all of that, but that's kind of where the knowledge ends because all as we see is the decision that's made. With our unique requirements in our community, is there anything in your mandate that would help us understand how we can move forward with development in our community, bearing in mind that we've developed almost all the property that we can within our community? We have a fairly serious demand for industrial land and we just really do not have anywhere to go and offer those to our community and to future, you know, developers that may have interest in our community. So I don't know who I'm asking, but if one of you could maybe just comment on that process.
Just to build on Counselor Rhodes' comments, we're all supported by the Asuias Indian Band.
Yes, that's right. I'm correct.
All right, well, I'm happy to take a stab at that, and if anyone from the gallery wants to jump in, they're welcome to. I think there's lots of times, I think people think that the commission operates a bit like a local government council. We're a little bit different in that we're a tribunal. So these are the decision-makers, the three individuals you see sitting here in the front. They are presented with all of the information on an application. There are no staff recommendations, for example, that come forward in terms of that. They are tasked themselves with determining, based on all the material that's provided, whether or not they feel it's meeting the mandate vis-à-vis Section 6 or Section 4.3. So they deliberate in a little bit of a different manner and they do that even independent from staff. We, of course, support them in ensuring they have the information, that process is set up that way. They also determine whether there's a site visit required, whether there's any additional information, they have any questions. So in terms of how they deliberate, they don't deliberate in a public setting like yourselves do with reports that come forward that speak to consistency with your zoning violation, your OCP, because they're looking at the broader province. Now with respect to your comments, which I can appreciate in terms of the constraints around development you might have or any community have, that's why we're really stressing these opportunities for us to get together and talk about what it means to preserve agriculture, what that means in your community, what your challenges are. I think the best opportunity to do that is through large-scale planning exercises like official community plans. I'm afraid I'm not familiar with how old your official community plan is, but we're definitely interested in engaging with you and having an understanding. You probably saw when we were talking about Section 6 and then Section 4.3. Section 4.3, which really relates to the north, talks about those socioeconomic considerations that any community might have. And while we're not always able to, you know, sort of wave the brush on agriculture and not consider it a priority, I think there's ways to sort of balance some of those constraints. But we really can't do that on an application-by-application basis. There's lots of examples for, for instance, where someone will have a piece of property and I'm sure the elected officials in the community at the time are in favor of it and they actually support it and direct it to come forward to the commission. But because it's outside of a larger-scale planning exercise, it gives you an opportunity. You saw our commissioner, Mr. Norton, asked the question, like, where else in your community? There's been lots of times we've sat down at a planning table and a municipality has said, yeah, we've designated these areas, they're a little underutilized, we want to make sure that we realize industrial here first and that we maybe identify this area as a future planning area with the ALC. But we kind of agree that, yeah, at some point we'll come and work together on trying to figure out if we can wrestle some of those challenges to the ground in terms of a plan. But it's definitely much more effective to do that through a community and ALC planning exercise than to do it on a one-off application because it really just feels like a one-off application. It doesn't have the context that's backed up by the planning exercises that you would go through or through the regional district if there's a regional growth strategy. So any opportunity to do area planning, regional growth strategy planning, official community planning, that's really, that's really where we can achieve some benefits. And the commission has actually, there's some criteria that allows myself as the CEO or any CEO of the Agricultural Land Commission to make some decisions that don't even go through the panel process if they're related to specific planning decisions. Say, for example, you did an OCP and it identified a specific area with all sorts of other trade-offs and benefits for development. When and if those applications finally come in, if they meet that specific criteria, the CEO can actually approve them because they're based on a planning decision that was supported by the Agricultural Land Commission. So really quite often, it's trying to do it together on a broader basis than just a one-off application. So if that's answered your question or if anybody has anything to add?
Jerry?
Can I just, can I just say first, Jerry, that thank you very much for that. I really appreciate it. And I think that it's really important to work together. The regional district and the town, and I think our OCPs are about 10 years old because I was on the one for the regional district when we did that and the town was doing it at the same time. We also have been a strong supporter of the regional growth strategy. So we're on board with this and we're looking to work with you and to help. Sorry, go ahead, Jerry.
Oh, thank you. Well, one of the things I just want to stress is, one of the decision-makers, something that we look at when, especially if you come to us for an exclusion, like, we're not a close-minded trio of people here. We try to look at everything we can. And if a city's here, we know you can't just up and move your city and it's happened over a number of years. But when someone applies for an exclusion, one of the things we look at, first of all, do they really need it? Is there another place they can go? That's why I asked the question on secondary suites. You need affordable housing, understand that. If I was comfortable that everything that you've already got that could accommodate a secondary suite was going to be used, that would help me make my decision. But another thing is, when you're coming for a piece of property, is it the best use of that piece of property? Like, when we make a decision, we're looking at 100 years down the road or 200 years. We're not looking at tomorrow. We don't look at any economic things whatsoever. Like, someone, you know, we get it all the time where someone will come to us and say, well, we're in dire straits, we're going to lose our farm if we can't subdivide it and sell half of it off. Well, we don't take any more stock in that as if somebody came to us that was a multimillionaire. We look at it exactly the same way. But if you come and you're going to, you know, ask for something like, say, especially in exclusion, is this the best use for this property? Are you going to put a bunch of house trailers on it? Or are you going to put whatever, or are you going to put a three-story building? And where else can it be accommodated? So those kind of things that we come up with. But we do understand, especially in cities where you've got things like hospitals and airports and things like that, you can't move it. You know, so we're not going to be unreasonable, but ask for what you need when you need it, kind of thing, and not, you know, not too far ahead, not if you don't really need it. If it's something I would like to have, it would be a nice to have, but we live without it, so.
We hope that you will today take a look at the property and see, was that in the plans, Mr. Cunningham? Are you, were you planning to go out and have a look at this property? Because we think that that might be a good idea. And it's pretty easy to find.
We can swing by.
Okay. Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, I just wanted to kind of give you a simpler direction. Go back up to the light of the Husky and hang a left, and it's about a half a mile on your right.
Yeah, out this door too. Yes. Greg knows where it is, he can take it.
Good question. This is my third council visit since I've been on the commission and it's the same question over and over again. And it's tough. I understand where you're coming from, but Section 6 is our goalpost that we have to work under and, Jerry, we are very open-minded and fair-minded, but, you know, we do have a mandate here. But my message to council is to look outside the box, you know? You know, this is kind of a historic thing that we're going through right now with this property and that, and I understand that. But, you know, you say you've got mountains on the west and the east, all that, that's opportunity. I mean, look at Anacost Mountain. There's opportunity up there. Look at that instead of sort of being a disadvantage. Try to start thinking of it as it could be an advantage. The other advantage is the Asuias Indian Band, probably the most progressive band in the country. You might want to start thinking of, I'm not trying to tell you your business, but what I am trying to say is have a look at your older parts of the community that have got those old 30s and 40s houses. Is that really serving, you know, maybe, again, all I'm suggesting is start thinking out of the box. That's what, because the land, we're 5 percent of 1 percent in the valley. Our mandate goes from the border to Revelstoke. So, you know, the little bit of eggland that each community is really important to people of British Columbia, so. That's all I, I mean, it's a tough question, there's not a, there's no simple answers. But until council starts thinking out of the box and bringing that back to the commission, not our job to do that. But, good luck.
Thank you. We certainly understand that and I think one of the things we thought was that in the OCP, we were trying to put things in the downtown core and build that up. So this particular property is within walking distance of the school, provided it's kept. And I guess that's another topic. And the shopping and the arena and so on. So we feel that it's a very good place to put some affordable housing units, that it would be easy for these people to access all of the things, including the library. Anybody else have, have anything else that they wanted to say? Well, thank you very much for coming. We certainly appreciate it. We are happy to have any or all of you at any time to come and explain things or help. Have that turned off? So thank you so much and we certainly hope that you will look on this particular property favorably and see what it is that we see in it and why we're so happy to have a developer looking at it. And we're happy to have our fire hall, which was 10 years in the development, being opened this fall. So thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll just wait a minute till we go on to the next one?
Was it, he did it in the couch?
Just wait a second before we go on to the next one?
Yeah.
Trees still on the library ward?
No, no, it's on it now. Me.
They were so glad to get rid of me.
No, 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 no.
We were glad to get rid of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, so we'll go on to the next thing on our agenda, which is the community project celebration. We have a report from Mr. Reminko.
Thank you, Madam Court Off. The past three years, the community has seen substantive improvements in our community infrastructure with no real celebration or acknowledgement of the community successes. Planning is underway for Lake Asuias Appreciation Day on May 21st. This day may also serve to celebrate the community successes over the past three years. The past three years have seen the completion of three major capital projects such as the scheduled completion of 74th Avenue funded from Community Works Grant, Gyro Park Phases A and B, Washrooms at Goodman Park and the Desert Sun Marina, and additional play equipment over at the Lions Park. As part of our resort municipality commitments, there is a need to have public acknowledgement of the facilities that have received resort municipality initiative funding. There are several activities planned for the May 21st event. Perhaps additional activities can be included and eliminate the need for a special day in the near future. Suggested activities could include the invitation of Honorable Shirley Bond and M.L.A. Larson to the event, community picnic where council or somebody who council designates can cook and provide hot dogs to the public, speeches and acknowledgements built in around the program. Options for consideration, work with the group organizing the Asuias Lake Appreciation Day to include a community celebration of special projects, plan another day to celebrate our community successes, and don't plan, or don't plan any activity to celebrate our community success projects. So just in follow-up to this, I had an opportunity to talk to Birgit last week on Friday, whether or not the Asuias Day celebration could accommodate some additional activities like this, and she was very excited about the opportunity as well. So just looking for some council direction, how we want to approach this so that we can, if council wants to do something like this, we can see if appropriate people can be invited and then take a look at what council's involvement may be. Could be that council contract Rotary to do hot dogs or...
I've already booked that week off.
Or something like that, you know, some type of discussion could be with the Asuias Lake Celebration Group.
And thank you. I'm glad that you, that you thought about this and suggested it because I do think that we need to certainly do something. I know we did have the washroom over at the Marina, we did something.
We did something with the opening of the Marina, yes.
Yeah, the opening of the Marina, not necessarily the washroom.
Yeah.
Yeah. So my, when I was thinking about this, my, I guess my biggest concern is, is the long weekend in May a good time for us to sort of take on something else? Because I had no idea what council, and Mr. Reminko, you will not be available to cook hot dogs that day, I know that. Neither will Counselor King, he will be away. I'm pretty tied up with inviting the councils from Orville and Tanasket up to actually take part in the Lake Asuias Day so that there is the market in the morning. The way I've got it sort of planned so far, and I was hoping that all, that any counselors that were available would attend, is that they would come up for the market on May first, then I would arrange some sort of a luncheon. And there are quite a few people on this list, and whether all of them are going to show up or not, there could be 30 people from what I understand, the list that I was given. And then there is, there are some opening speeches about 2:00 down at Gyro on behalf of the Asuias Lake Water Quality people. So, and I know that they've got some food vendors that they were considering bringing in for that day, plus, I believe the Gyro Beach Cafe will be open at that time, and there's entertainment. Is it taking on too much in one day? And I, and I'm here, I'm happy to work with whatever we decide, but I just wonder if we've taken on too much. Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the town should get involved and help some, support this respectful day if we can help promote it somehow, but I wouldn't want to take away from their real initiative of the water quality, but the things we have developed are right next to the water. So I guess it would be, how can we play sort of a big part, but it actually a small part to make the event bigger and more exciting?
So can I sort of ask if, I mean, I know that Jim's going to be away and Barry are, and it's the long weekend. I didn't know how busy you other three were.
That's probably one of the busiest weekends of the...
involved. And I think probably we should choose a day when we can get counselors cooking hot dogs or, or something. So I certainly hope that any of you that have half an hour or an hour will come to this Lake Asuias Appreciation Day, because I think it's, it's going to be a really good activity. They've spent a lot of time on this, but I kind of wondered if, on the long weekend, that would happen.
I've dedicated the lunch because of Tenasket's mayor talking to me.
Oh.
Said he'll be here. So I just said, okay, well, in my, with jousting, I just said, I can't be there from eleven to one.
Okay.
Anything after that. So I can help, like, between eleven and one.
Well, they're coming at twelve, as what I've, yeah, they're, I, that's what, the time we'd sort of, and sort of between twelve and two, have the lunch, whatever that was. And then the other activity starts at two. So change that from twelve till two.
Okay.
But has anybody got any other suggestions about what we could do instead of things on this particular day? Councilor Rhodes?
Well, when I first read the report, I thought it was a great idea, but I'd forgotten upon all these other things that were kind of going on. I really, really liked the idea, though. I think when we're going to have it is probably the, of the least importance. But maybe focusing on a couple of weeks before, or maybe a week in between there and the, and the first of July might, might work just as well. And just with some second thought about the whole thing, this is kind, this would be kind of a, a community event. And, you know, on the long weekend, we're going to have people from all over the place. And maybe it'd be good to organize it so that local people come out, because those are really the ones that are, you know, the, the major, probably recipients of this particular thing that we're going to be doing. And I also did hear about, from the, from the Water Quality Society about their day, about how happy they would be having it on that day. I heard the same thing. But, you know, maybe it's a better idea to just take the focus off that, have it on a different weekend, and really concentrate and have local people come out. And we don't want to wait too late into the year, because then we'll be fully engaged in the tourist season. I guess we probably will be at that time already, especially if our weather stays like this. So maybe a couple of weeks before that might be a better time.
Yes, Councilor King?
What's the timeframe to have the second day of Gyro finish?
End of the month.
End of this month?
Yes.
Okay. So then, yeah, leading up, a couple of weeks after that would be good.
So sometime in May is, but, but probably not, just not that weekend. I'm even wondering about, say, on a Wednesday evening, you know, from five to seven, inviting people down for hamburgers, hot dogs, and, and, you know, sort of a walk down there, and, and something like that. But I don't, but I'm kind of open.
Okay. So seeing how, you know, it's not tied to this weekend, why don't we leave it, there's, we're having a waterfront steering committee meeting this week? Why don't, we can, I think that topic may, was on the agenda or can be on the agenda. And we can bring something back to council, some, some suggestions that we can review.
Perfect. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I do think it's a great idea, and, and I'm all for it. But definitely, there are going to be a lot of people here on May the twenty fourth, twenty first for that particular day. So any of, anybody who's, who's around and, and is interested, please come down to Gyro that day. It'll be, it'll be good fun. Okay, thank you very much. And there isn't anything else? So could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Councilor Rhodes, all in favor? Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.